Hi, I'm Julie Thompson. Welcome to the Plymouth Select Board Candidate Interview. I want to take a moment to thank the candidates for participating in this interview and collaborating with PAC TV to bring this informational programming to residents and voters this election season. Let me explain the format. We will be conducting a one-on-one interview-style Q&amp;A format with each candidate lasting about 30 minutes. Responses will not be timed, and follow-up questions may be asked during this format. We aim to ask up to about five questions, but that will depend on the length of the responses, along with any follow-up discussion during this exchange. Candidates will be allowed to address anything not covered, or that they would like to add clarification to at the end of the interview in their closing remarks. Let's get started. Today, we're speaking with Vedna Haywood, one of the four candidates in the special election for Select Board. Vedna, welcome, and I'm going to jump right into the first question.
Okay, wonderful, thank you for having me.
What is your motivation for running for this position right now, especially since you're going to have to run again if you're successful in the spring? And what is, in your estimation, the defined role of a member of the Select Board?
Well, I decided, thank you Julie for the question, I decided to run because I believe that Plymouth deserves a choice in who advocates for them. On May 18th, there was a gap that was created when someone resigned, and so I saw this as an opportunity to use my years of service to broaden my commitment to the town. Yes, it is a nine-month position, but I believe that if elected, I will continue to still be in that, not only serving, but in a campaign mode. So as we reach into, I guess, next year, in the May elections, I would have already continued to already be in that mode, a need-be. And then in terms of what is the role of the Select Board, it's a varied role. So the role of a Select Board member is to adopt policy and guidelines, it's to enact rules, it is to work with the town manager in terms of, you know, being more efficient and orderly, the orderly operation of the town itself. It is to approve all collective bargaining agreements, as we also do on the school board. It is to meet with the elected boards and the commissions within the town. It's a varied group, and it's also to appoint the town manager, town council, registered voters, people who are parts of boards and commissions, as stated within our charter.
Okay, now, question, there are a bevy, there's scores and scores of boards and commissions in the town. Is the Select Board supposed to meet with all of them over the course of the year, or just the more policymaking ones or budget-making ones?
My understanding, the responsibility of the Select Board is to meet jointly with elected boards of the town for the purpose of sharing information. So I know that, like, for instance, within the school committee side, we do have a lot of different committees.
Subcommittees?
Subcommittees. And so within that, it's divvied up between the school board members. So my understanding is that as a Select Board member as well, your responsibilities for these particular boards are divvied up within the Select Board.
So the whole Select Board doesn't meet with the whole other board?
To my understanding.
Yeah, there might be just someone who's assigned to a certain board.
Or representative of.
To bring that, now, let's talk a little bit, right now, you are on the school committee, correct? Okay, you can't obviously serve in both, or can you?
No, I can't, as many people have asked, can you please? No, I can't serve in both.
Was that a difficult choice to know that if you are elected to the Select Board, you will be off the school committee?
It was a difficult choice, but I also see this as opportunity to continue to advocate for the school as a Select Board member. So it's not that I'm abandoning this role per se, it is the fact that I will still have the opportunity to advocate, but in a different way.
Okay, okay, that's good. All right, we're going to go into the next question. Plymouth is the largest town by land area in the state, and yet one of the oldest, using one of the oldest forms of government in the country. In your opinion, has Plymouth outgrown the town meeting form of government?
To say that has Plymouth outgrown the town meeting form of government, I believe that, this is a great question. I think that we are now using the opportunity to have this conversation. With the creation of the Charter Commission, we're now looking to see what works for us, what's efficient in terms of this particular form of government, what is challenging. I think that this is an opportunity to reimagine and work towards possibly a more accountable and equitable and effective form of government.
So if you had to decide, if it was up to you, would we keep a town meeting form of government, or would we go to a different form of government?
Well, it isn't up to me to decide at this point, it's up to the Charter Commission to actually evaluate this. But what I would say is that I think, given the fact that we as a community have grown, the fact that we have a budget that's almost $300 million, I think there are some points, some areas where there does need improvement in order for the town to run more efficiently and adequately serve our constituency. So I do agree that there needs to be some areas of improvement within that. And whatever is chosen, I hope that it speaks to kind of improving some of these challenges that we have.
Okay, so the Charter Commission is going to just take up to a year and a half, possibly up to two years, to make a recommendation, and then they make the recommendation, and clearly it goes to the voters.
Yes, it does.
So the voters end up deciding. So for example, the Select Board, five people that literally have to know almost everything about the town. How can it effectively be done in a part-time position that isn't paid? Or is stipend, it might as well not be paid.
I see. So there are, well, that's a valid question. And I think when we look at even different parts, or different forms of government throughout legislative commonwealth, we have this council-manager form, we do have a council-mayor form, which for the most part is a paid position. And our form of government, and then there's also a commission form that exists, but it's very rare. So yes, I think the issue is that when we look at a mayor and council form of government, we have this understanding that this particular person will be elected, not necessarily having some of the background that, say, a town manager has in terms of public administration and, what's it called, like, the business acumen. And so when we, and when we look at a volunteer form, we still have a town management side, but we also do not run into some of the issues where there could be special interests attached to, you know, persons who, within a paid form. For me, whatever is the most efficient, whatever continues to keep us as a town sustainable is what I will vote for, once that information is aggregated and presented to us.
So, and my other question, kind of piggybacking off this, is the lack of amount of people who actually show up and vote. How do we get, and it's all the towns around here, it's not just Plymouth, how do we get more involvement from the citizens of our town?
I mean, that's a burgeoning question. I mean, it's a question, I think, even as a member of the League, when we talk about being civically engaged. And I think a lot of it too is actually, you know, one is modeling, two is actually like engaging the constituency to help them understand the importance of local government. When we have larger elections on the federal level, you do have a much better turnout. But I think perhaps having a better understanding as to the impact that local government has on you. People are working, people are doing, you know, raising their children, and there's difficulty, and so maybe, like specifically in our sense, maybe should we move a larger election to a time that is more feasible? Should this May election go to the fall?
And the problem is, is with our form of government we have now, you can't do that.
Yes.
So yeah, it'll be interesting to see. All right, let's go on to the third question. Although not specifically under the purview of the Select Board, what is your opinion on the tax burden placed on residents for maintaining services and infrastructure versus increased commercial economic development? You also have to include, what about open space? And what about a separate tax rate for businesses or for individuals? It's a huge, huge question.
It is a huge question.
So how would you start to address that?
Okay, so the tax burden, so I just want to clarify the question that you asked. So what is the...
Well, it's not, the Select Board really has nothing to do with that, but a lot of people have suggested that if we have a lot more commercial tax revenue and development, we can offset some of the tax burdens that the residents are paying. What's your opinion on that?
So local government diversification requires, it should require a greater reliance on a multitude of revenue services. So I believe that there should, diversification away from property tax can lead to an improved, like, position within the town. And so when we have a total reliance on one system, we risk the fact that if that system somehow has a break, so we talk about the housing crisis, right? And so you have an issue where people are losing their homes, therefore there's this inability to pay for taxes. So therefore, that becomes a hit on our particular economy, considering that I believe 97% of our receipts come from our residents. So it would behoove us to actually find different ways to actually diversify our receipts within this town so that we don't have, the onus is not on the taxpayer.
So what are some of those other forms of revenue that we could be looking at?
So we talk about tourism, and how Plymouth is a tourist town. So how can we somehow mitigate those barriers to people coming to Plymouth? I've mentioned, we have to look at our transportation, whether that be transit or by waterways. I'm also investigating the blue economy that the Cape Cod has begun to implement. In fact, I believe the governor, the governor's administration actually provided some grant monies in means of like $4 million, for a total of $57 million towards these blue economies. And what that does, it's an economic and environmental, like, sustainable way to bring monies or a different type of economy into your town by using your waterways and your coastal shores. And so, and in that, you're bringing in jobs, you're bringing in academia. And so this is a different way to kind of diversify. And also you're bringing in monies to support local businesses here, because, I mean, there's some specific issues that we have here, where there's an inability to pay our employees a livable wage, the affordability issue that exists here in terms of people who are trying to stay in their homes and people who don't have the ability to purchase homes. So, you know, how can we have this influx of money to come into this community so that it supports us in a different way and not having the onus on just one revenue stream?
Right, so let's, since you brought up the housing, let's talk about affordable housing. What possible plans would you support or bring forward or be part of to try to bring some affordability, especially to first-time homebuyers? Or are kids that grow up here but can't afford to live here? They can't stay here unless they stay with mom and dad?
Yeah, they can't stay. So, you know, really looking at inclusionary zoning in terms of affordable housing, also looking at some of, you know, seeing if we could possibly create some sort of grants for first-home buyers. And then two, in terms of development, well, this doesn't go necessarily to the affordability aspect, but I think perhaps implementing some community-like benefit agreements with our developers so that some of the resources, after some of these developments are created, these residential developments are created, that onus for the upkeep does not remain on the homebuyer, that there is a little bit more accountability on the development side for creating infrastructure towards some of these now more trafficked areas due to residential building.
Similar to what condo associations have to do now.
Yes, somewhat.
For a different type of housing.
For a different type of housing. So when I lived in the South Florida area, if a developer was creating a subdivision, they were responsible for roads and actually money towards the schools. So any resources above and beyond the capabilities of that particular city or town, this was, they were responsible.
Interesting, okay, that's an interesting point. Okay, let's go to question number four. Given society's thirst for instantaneous information and responses, what is your opinion on the use of social media by any department or board committee member for the purpose of dispersing or collecting information or opinions? What do you see as advantages and disadvantages to utilizing social media?
It's interesting, you say the thirst. So the advantages of utilizing social media is that, yes, you can somehow attempt to collate, you can disseminate information very quickly. Okay. The disadvantage is that you cannot have a conversation that has the ability to kind of decipher tone within that conversation. I think social media, in one sense, if you are, if there's emergency information, if there are like bulletins or bullets, you know, that you need to be disseminated, that's fine. If you are announcing particular things that are happening within the community, or if there's a way to sign up that makes it easier for others, that's fine. And you also have to think too, you know, we live in an intergenerational community, and particular generations, this is how they communicate. On the flip side though, in order to have authentic conversation, I don't think social media is the place for that. I think we still have to at least, you know, go back to our regular, like, speaking in order for us to somehow come to some sort of, if it's to come to an agreement or an understanding, I think meeting with people, whether it be virtually and/or in person, is the best form of communication. But in terms of dissemination, quickly for information, yes. To have a back-and-forth, absolutely. I think it's a difficult space, just because you cannot decipher tone. And I think at times too, it's a space that allows people to actually throw out information, but not to receive it themselves, so it's...
And what about the vetting of the information that is put? I mean, that's always, in any format, it's always, you know, are you getting a trusted source?
Absolutely.
So do you think the town, let's go further into that. How can the town do better to communicate the bevy of issues that people need to be aware of or know of or be educated about? Because again, that comes also to the fact that so few people vote. Why, what is the best way, especially the Select Board, where you're kind of seen as an overseer of the town in a lot of ways? How can you structure a way to communicate more effectively so that people, A, know that what they're getting is true and vetted information and from the actual board itself, and B, to get people to be more involved?
To make people to be more involved, I think it's using all those streams, whether it be sending out, you know, emails for those who only look at emails, whether it be using your social media, whether if it's something that is, you know, important, people still pick up the phone. So, you know, to use the phone, there's an ability, I think, when there are things that are concerning to individuals, they will receive that information. If it's, you know, at times even in the center, you'll see like banners, you know, where they're highly trafficked areas, so that that's something, oh, that's, oh, that's happening, okay. You know, maybe that's something I need to check out. For those who have the inability to actually use any type of social media, I mean, that's something that we have to explore. Do we have to go to those places in order to provide that information? Whether that be particular centers, like the senior homes or whichever, so that information is disseminated in that way? It can't just be one particular type of, you know, way or system that we are like disseminating information. I'm beginning to see, at least on the website, I know there were some complaints earlier in terms of the difficulty of using the website, but even in, you know, trying to educate myself more about the town, you know, saw a particular site where there was some information regarding budgets and revenue. And I was very happy to see that, okay, there's a little bit more transparency in terms of what those numbers are and how they're, you know, divvied up. So, you know, they're working towards, there could be a little bit more work in terms of transparency and access to information. That is one of those huge things, access to information. And, you know, that's something that we could actually speak to other, you know, people within the town. How do you receive information?
Yeah, and ask them.
And ask them, yes, you know. Sometimes we're using the newspaper, but there's generations not that go look at the newspaper.
I know Michelle Brody does these robocalls to all of her seniors, and she reaches all of them, at least she leaves a message, you know, and she'll tell what's going on. So like, to your point, you use the method that's going to hit the most, especially your population that you're going after.
Exactly.
But you use the method that's most adequate for that. So let's just finish up this conversation with the board itself, the Select Board itself. Five people, is that enough? Is five people enough?
We are a very large town. With, you know, come understanding the census information towards the end of this year, we're looking at 60,000 to 70,000. I think there was an influx of 1,000 people that I just read within this COVID time. And so it may not be enough, it may not be enough. We have, you know, representatives in terms of town meeting from 15 precincts. And so do we need to evaluate a larger Select Board to adequately serve this town? I don't think that's unreasonable. And hopefully, with this year and a half that the Charter Commission has, and receiving all this information from others, maybe that's something that they could, you know, think about as well. Five is a low number.
It's a lot of work.
It's a lot of work, yes, it's a lot of work.
What you have to know is just mind-boggling.
Yeah, so with a little bit more hands, what is it?
More hands, yes. Oh, absolutely, yeah. And the other thing you brought up was, you really looked through the website and you saw almost everything that anybody would ever need to know is actually there, if you take the time to look for it or watch the meetings.
Or watch the meetings, yeah.
Because especially FinCom, those finance and advisory meetings are very...
Detailed and long. Yes, yeah, and a lot of the meetings are, to tell you the truth, when you watch Charter Commission, two hours. When you watch, you know, Planning Board, at least 30 minutes to an hour. FinCom, two hours plus, a lot of these meetings are detailed. It's unfortunate, but the thing is, it's also the time that people have. You know, we think about Plymouth, Plymouth is, so the median age for Plymouth is the 40s. And so when I think about that, I think about families. And so, you know, and families are working and raising their kids. And so do you have that allotted time? How can we kind of disseminate this information in little spurts so that people can actually, you know?
Is there any subject or subject matter that we haven't talked about yet that you really wanted to talk about today?
I don't know necessarily, I mean, we talked about taxes. We didn't necessarily speak about some of the platform that are, or some of, not necessarily platform, this is more of a collective, what's it called, concerns. We're on public health, and then also regarding, as you mentioned, the open spaces, and climate resiliency, so that's another, those are two areas that I'm also looking at.
Why don't you talk about public health for a minute? How do you think the town of Plymouth has done overall during this whole COVID-19 thing?
Thing.
Thing. This ongoing thing, this cloud that we're under?
That everyone's under. Yeah, I think, you know, they've done the best that's, that most could do in this particular situation. In terms of a pandemic that's only existed 100 years before. And so I think within the public health structure, there needs to be a little bit more like, not necessarily organization, but I guess in terms of like planning and policy and implementation, and broadening the scope of what public health truly is, that goes beyond, you know, sewers and other items. I don't know if we have necessarily a centered focus on public health, but certainly this year has shown us that human life is invaluable and not being prepared is very, very costly. I think possibly going into the future, looking at more collaborations within particular organizations to kind of come together and actually create like some better planning in terms of emergency management. I know that they did, you know, and then also the fact that we're now recognizing the importance of data. Yes, and a collection of data. And so I think, and with the creation of their advisory board, I think that was a great, you know, a thing for them to do to start. Some of the work is being done, it can be expanded upon. This was an unusual situation, unfortunately. This was an unusual situation.
Okay, so in the last, we have about three minutes left, so you can speak to the camera and tell the voters why you think Vedna Haywood should be the candidate that is elected.
Okay. I just want to thank PAC TV for hosting this event and informing the Plymouth residents of the candidates running for the Plymouth Select Board. My name is Vedna Haywood, and I am your fellow resident, neighbor, and civil servant, and I am running for the Plymouth Select Board. I'm a transplant from the state of Florida, and my husband Jim and I moved here over a decade ago because he wanted to return to the state he loves so much. He often talked about a childhood where culture of family, friends, and community was paramount, and one he wanted his new family to experience. And having lived in a state where most people were transient, I was ultimately intrigued. We moved to Plymouth on a day trip, where I fell for the seaside charm and ultimately decided to create roots and raise our family here. Jim and I are raising our young son, who is currently part of the Plymouth School Committee, our school district. We are working, we are the working class of Plymouth. He is in hospitality, and I am a trauma nurse. As a nurse in critical care, I am entrusted with making crucial emergency decisions and implementing plans that affect the lives of my patients while navigating through difficult conversations with families and patients I care for. As a current school committee member, I am tasked with making difficult executive decisions from budget to policy that impact our children, families, and the employees I serve. In 25 years as a community servant and advocate, I have had the opportunity to be part of numerous boards and committees from local to national level, from advocating for education for children to voting rights for adults, from chambers of commerce to state-appointed managed care, from working during epidemics to creating policy and initiatives during a pandemic. My life of volunteerism has allowed me to be a varied, has allowed a varied opportunity to simply serve others. And it is in that spirit of service I am here today to ask you for your vote, to use my experience to broaden my commitment to this community that I fell in love with over a decade ago. We, the collective who care about Plymouth beyond race and creed, have one thing in common. We love this town, and like thousands of intergenerational residents, we deserve to live in a resilient, sustainable, healthy, and affordable community. And with your vote and collaboration...
And with your vote and collaboration, I will work to make Plymouth not only a thriving, healthy community, but one we know and continue to love. The vision for Plymouth should be forward-looking, objective, and focused on measurable results. Now more than ever, our town is in transition, and it's at a crossroad of change, and it's important that we, as a collective, are present and engaged in this change. So on August fourteenth, you have a choice. An individual who makes thoughtful and timely, tough and timely decisions and has a widespread commitment to collaboration throughout local government. You have a choice for balanced community representation and not narrow agendas or perceived, or preconceived ideas. Our select board needs a fresh approach and more members who are committed to civility and common sense. So with your vote, it will be a privilege to continue to serve my community on the select board and to serve and represent Plymouth residents fairly in an authentic and inclusionary way. Thank you.
Thank you, Vedna. And thank you for participating in this interview. We wish you the best elect throughout your campaign and in the election. For our viewers, thank you for joining us. If you're interested in watching replays of this interview, visit our website, pacTV.org/elections for replay times and online viewing options, including PAC TV's on-demand and streaming service, PAC TV Prime. And please make your choices heard by voting in the special election on Saturday, August fourteenth. Thank you and good day.
Thank you.